Thank you Frank. I'd like to mention before I introduce Don, he's been in Lafayette all his life. Most of you probably know him. But we have a member that was operated on last Thursday, Mr. Bob Lowe. And he had 90 percent blockage. And so he's, but he's doing well. And so he asked us to say an extra prayer because he's not used to sitting at home in the bed waiting to leave. So he's a pretty neat guy and he's well, he always attends at most of our meetings. So please remember in your prayers. Thank you very much. Don has been here a very, you know, he's been in Lafayette all his life, I'm aware of that. And he began his second term as Lafayette City Parish Council in January 2012. Born and raised in Lafayette, Louisiana. He credits his interest in public service to his father, the former District 15 Judicial District Lucien Seibertren Jr. He's deceased. His godfather, the Honorable Senator Edgar G. Mouton Jr. Don served with the greatest root effect to bring fiber to the home as a member of the Republican Parish Execution Committee, led and encouraged the passing of a resolution in support of the initiative. Don was an early and proud supporter to save the horse for him. Don represented the city parish Lafayette at La Centra International in presentation of the E Awards by the United States Secretary of Commerce in Washington 2011 and by the Congrès de Marianne 2014 World Licketing Congress in Maine, Quebec, and New Brunswick. Finally, he has been a very strong proponent of an active participant in all Lafayette's sister cities relations, special events, including Nemor, Belgium, Portier, France, and Le Canet, France. Don believes that to be a world-class business and cultural city, our city should develop and mature business and cultural relationship around the world with those that other Francophone countries who visit and support our region in the industry, culture and tourism. Don has served on several boards and civic organizations and is a graduate of the Greater Lafayette Chamber of Commerce Leadership Lafayette Class, that was number 18. He is an independent petroleum landman, married to former Camille Domang, and together they have four children and two grandchildren. And we're certainly happy to have you here this evening, Mr. Don.
Long introduction, thank you. That just means I'm old. Thank you for having me tonight. I know most of you in the room, I've met most of you and spoken with you at one time or another. You saw me walk in with a patch tonight. I recently had retina surgery and I wear the patch because it's a little distracting because my vision in my right eye is not quite what my left eye is. So it's real easy to sneak up on me right now on my right side. So, and there's some funny stories I could tell, but I'll leave that for another time. I really don't have a prepared speech for you tonight. But what I did want to do is bring you a little bit of news, share some things with you and quite frankly, because we're such a small group, if any of you want to move forward and let's, let's have some dialogue, I would certainly appreciate it. And I want to have, I want to hear from you is what, what I would like to do, is what's on your mind today? And in saying that, I would like to say, I would like you to keep your focus on Lafayette City and Parish. Because that's where I keep my focus. I do go to Washington a couple of times a year. On behalf of our utility, I work with the American Public Power Association and lobby Congress twice a year. It's almost time to do that again. And I have to tell you, it hadn't been as much fun the last number of years as it was during my first term. But still, it requires diligent efforts on behalf of someone to advocate for our utility in the halls of Congress. So that is where most of my energies go when it comes to Washington. Because there's a lot of other things I just can't do anything about. When it comes to Washington, when it comes to Baton Rouge, I can advocate, I can talk. But where I really need to put my efforts, on the city of Parish of Lafayette, and that's what I focused on. And that's the thing I know best. Because I'm, I'm in the middle of it. Sometimes I'm in the middle of controversy and as Mr. Centani will learn, if he hasn't learned already, the first time you have to make a decision, you end up making an enemy. Because somebody in the room is not going to like your decision. So therein lies the difference between running for election and governing. And I've been in a position to govern for the last seven years and I have to tell you, I've enjoyed it. It's been a great experience. It's very, well, I've put in a lot of effort. I'll just put it to you that way. I spend almost as much time with my council work as I do with my regular day job. So for six years anyway, I didn't sleep much. I finally had to learn to sleep a little more when I started having a few health issues and they, they warned me that I needed to get a little more sleep. But I'm glad to say that today, I think we're in a pretty good place. We're stationed pretty well. If you go to the LEADER website and you look at the accolades that your city and your parish has earned over the past 11 years, I think you might be amazed. Because we are growing into our shoes. And we will be a great city if we continue the way we, on the path that we're on. That being said, you can get ready for growth. And you can get ready for a little congestion, maybe even a little more than we have now. At least until we come up with solutions to solve some of those problems. And, you know, today, we're looking at the possibility, well, not the possibility, we're looking at a downturn in the oil and gas markets. And we're looking probably from what people tell me, 12 to 18 months of a downturn. And what that effect will have on us, we don't know. I will only tell you this, that in the years I've been in the oil field, in my, in my adult life, I've seen five downturns. Some were not quite so bad. The eighties were the worst. And I'm hoping that this one is not going to put us in that situation. I really don't think it will, but some things we have no control over. Depending on who you talk to that follows the international actions in the market, some will tell you that Arabs are trying to spank the Russians, they'll give you a number of different scenarios. All I can tell you today is everybody is freezing their budgets for this year. And a lot, a lot of the plans that were on the books for this year are going to be held for a while. And I'm not immune to that either, in my position. So it's going to be an interesting year. But in Lafayette, you know, we, we tend to be resilient. We've lived through these before. We're hopeful that they won't last long. And we will survive this, just like we did the other five. I want to stop for a second and I want to introduce you to my wife, Camille, who just walked in the door. And I'm glad she could be here. Thank you for coming. With that, I guess I would like to find out what your thoughts are, as much as anything. I can sit here and talk to you about any one of a number of things in the city of Lafayette or in the parish of Lafayette. But I would like to hear what you have to say and try and answer some of your questions or if you have questions of me, I'd like to try and answer those.
As usual, we appreciate the question that you may have to come up to the mic here so we can record this. Ed does a great job of editing. We, we've been putting it on YouTube as well as, as a local station as well. But if there's a question that you may have, whatever it may be concerning the parish or the city of Lafayette, whether it's utilities to issue, roads or connecting roads or that, that you have a question about, it's a great time to ask it now. Ms. Ella? That's Secretary, Ms. Ella Orsamo.
Hi Ella Orsamo. When Kevin Blancher was here, he had told us about a boulevard that they wanted to work on in Lafayette and it was going to be by down Johnston Street. I just wanted to know, are y'all moving forward with that plan? I'm not for it because there's not enough road. I don't understand why they really want to do that. Is it really necessary to put trees in the middle of the road to create a boulevard when we have a lot of potholes that I'd like to see fixed around Lafayette? Thank you.
There is a pilot program that plans have been worked out. There are some grants, there are state grants and federal grants because that road is not only a state highway, it's also a federal highway. And they have looked at taking one section of that and upgrading it. And when I say upgrading, understand that everybody wants, everybody I know wants Johnson Street upgraded. And they want the utilities in the ground, they want the poles gone, they want the place to look like a city and not like a hodgepodge. Those are discussions that have been going on ever since I got started in, in public service and serving on, on boards and committees. Those kind of issues are always issues about money. There is an idea floating out, not, not an idea, there is discussion about federal funding for those types of things through our NPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization. And you could see that in your lifetime. Hopefully I'll see it in mine. I think those type of improvements do a number of things. One, there is a way to have a boulevard and control traffic and have a more aesthetic Now, not everybody agrees with me, but I happen to think that boulevards are a good thing. And they have been proven in other areas, not only to increase property rights, property values, but to control traffic. And that there is a place for boulevards. You can't always put trees in boulevards and some boulevards may be able to have trees, some may not. I visited a few years ago with members of the NPO, a community in Colorado, Golden Colorado, who took a small segment of an area that was dying and the retail was dying. They did this type of project and you would have been hard pressed to find a retailer in that area that was in support of it before. But every one of the retailers afterwards would try and sell it for you. Golden Colorado. And there are other places who have done this. So this isn't, this isn't a new idea. It's been tested in Texas, it's been tested in some places in Louisiana. What they're looking at doing is what can we do in a small area near the campus? And part of the reason for wanting to do it on the campus, and one of the reasons the campus wants, UL wants to do it, is because they're looking for ways to make Johnson Street more pedestrian friendly, to get people from one side of the road to the other. Because they're expanding their campus and I don't think it's unsafe to say that sometime in the future, you may see the UL campus expanding all the way to St. Landry Street and in the, I guess that would be to the north. And they're kind of landlocked now, but they are buying more property and of course, I think they're in hopes that one day they may own part of the Lourdes property. I don't think anybody signed a deal, but at some time in the future, I would expect that to happen. So, that being said, I hope that answers your question. That has been studied. There are, there, there may be opportunities in the future, but it's, it's not something that's going to be realized tomorrow. And as you know, and I've always said, I think the first speech I made before I ran for office in 2007 was to this group. And one of the things I told them then, and it's the same now, is government moves at the speed of fudge. So part of that is probably a good thing. But I can tell you from my perspective and planning and trying to get things accomplished, it can be kind of frustrating sometimes.
Don, thanks for coming. I'm Justin Centani. I wanted to know after last month's vote, by the full council to override the Lafayette Parish Utilities Authority and what their decision was, has there been any kind of resolution to that? And why after nearly 20 years is this the first time that this has come up? Thanks.
Good question. Has anything come from it? Well, yes, there's, there are discussions behind the scenes about how to resolve this issue. The problem comes with consolidation. And in our charter, if you look at our charter, and some of you in the room I know have looked at the charter. It states that when dealing with financial matters, the council has to approve as well. And that's something that was added in at the last minute by some of the bond attorneys. I don't personally think that the charter was very well written. I don't think that the understanding of the outcome was realized beforehand or has given enough thought. What we have is a case where we have people who may have a handful of LUS constituents or LUS folks that LUS provides service to. And the understanding would be, well, if, if they didn't have all nine districts, who would, who would represent them? There has been discussion, and of course, there was discussion long before I ran for office because I remember when Ernie Alexander, at my seat, they were having a discussion about a weighted vote. I personally have long contended that the LUS authority should fall wholly and solely on the LPUA. And I'll take it one step further, I think it should not be elected officials. I think it, well, let me put it to you this way. It should not be members of the council. It should be a board or body that's elected by the folks in Lafayette, in the city of Lafayette. And they should serve as board of direct, as a board and directors of that board. Because the utility is a business. Now, yes, it's a governmental business, but it doesn't run quite the same as any other other government entity. It needs to be nimble and quick to respond. I don't think there's any question of anybody in this room that we probably have the best utility in the state. Does not mean we don't have room for improvement, but we have the best utility in the state, we have the best rates in the state, and we have the best response. And that's where the rubber meets the road. I've been very proud of our utility every time we've had a hurricane or every time we have a heavy storm and the response that we have. And a lot of that is because areas that we have annexed since the 60s were built outside of city recommended practices. Many of the utility poles are behind homes, in particular on this side of the river, excuse me, on the other side of the river in Ivanhoe in that area, where they have a lot of beautiful trees, but the utilities run behind the homes. And unlike most of you who live in the city of Lafayette, if you have a utility pole, it's in the front of your house and it's easily accessed. Those folks would like to have their utilities underground too. But it's almost financially impossible to do because of their location. Unless everybody in those neighborhoods is willing to pay a front foot assessment to pay for it. Or you as LUS, LUS customers are willing to pay higher rates for it. And I don't have to tell you, I do not like the thought of increasing rates. We've had one rate increase since I've been in office. It was the first one in 17 years and it took three attempts to get that rate increase. Those are the kind of things we as elected officials try to avoid because we know nobody wants to pay anymore. But I have to tell you, the day's coming where we have to take a look at what our financial needs are and are we meeting them? There are some, I've tried some creative ways to approach that. Sometimes you, you have to accept defeat easily and with a smile on your face. But I think in, in a short period of time, what you're going to see is some creative financing to try and provide more utilities down the extension of Ambassador Caffrey to Highway, well, not to Highway 90, but to the Broussard Line. Because we were, we were planning that sort of thing long before that road was built. In fact, the NPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization and the committee that I chair, the Transportation Policy Committee, looked at all of those things long before that road was built, while in the planning process. And our recommendations at that time were to find a financing mechanism, kind of like a one cent sales tax along that corridor, to help pay for the infrastructure that needs to go in there. What we have today is a need for about $6.5 million worth of infrastructure that I can tell you is identified today. Water, sewer, electric, lift stations. We have already run into the issue that you might expect without having that in place, where a developer comes in and they're on the end of the line. And the policy has been before where, and this is, this, I'm going to, this is a long way back to your question. But you, the person at the end of the line, the developer at the end of the line, ends up paying for all the infrastructure to be put in for everybody in between and everybody in between pays zip. So that's what this meeting was about the other night. Let me, let me make that point. The discussion was, what do we do about that? Because what we do is offer developers betterments. And what is a betterment? If a developer comes in and he wants to put in, say, a 60 inch sewer line, and I'm just grabbing numbers out of the air. And we come in and say, well, we need you to lower it a little bit and we need a larger sewer line because we're planning for the future addition of other properties. Well, that developer pays to have that done and then we pay them the difference. We actually write them a check for the difference when the job is done. It's been a practice we've done for years. What we can afford to do is keep taking that hit. What has to happen in the future is everyone that ties onto that has to pay a little bit of the betterment as we go. Otherwise, you as rate payers for LUS are going to end up picking up the tab. And that's what was at stake that night in that meeting. And I think the reason the vote went the way it did was because many of the people on the council didn't understand. We had two members of the LPUA who voted against it as well. And my conversations with them afterwards was, they said to me, well, this looks like an impact fee. And I said, no, it's not an impact fee. But if you don't do these type of things, you will be looking at impact fees. And let me tell you, impact fees are a heck of a lot more expensive than this. But at some point, it needs to be addressed again and it will come up again very soon, I suspect. And my hope is that the council will be a little more educated about it then. Because we have folks that want to develop that property all along that corridor. And if we can't provide them the service that they need, well, then they're going to go someplace else. So we want those businesses in our community. We want those residents in our community. We want our community to grow despite the fact that we see growth in the other municipalities. We need to see the city of Lafayette continues to grow too. Now, what are we going to do about it? We're going to bring the subject up again. We're going to have more discussion amongst the council. One of the things I have suggested that we do, and I'll be very frank with you, is that we put an amendment on the ballot for you all to vote on that gives the LPUA the authority. The structure of that on the ballot, I'm not sure of yet because I do want to consider that everyone that is an LUS customer gets some representation. But right now with consolidation as a whole, we have representation without taxation. We have people out in the unincorporated area of the parish that aren't paying for some of the things that we do here, yet they want them. And they want them yesterday. And look, they need them. But you can't get the milk cow for free. LUS has a utility at one time, used to sell its excess electricity. And we were the golden goose. That's not the case anymore. And we have to be very fiscally responsible, and we are. But we can't let this go unnoticed or to keep doing betterments without recovering our costs and we can't lay it all on one contractor. If we do that and we end up with impact fees, I'll give you an idea what an impact fee can cost you. And we looked at this a number of years ago. I went to Lincoln, Nebraska with a handful of other folks and we picked Lincoln, Nebraska because it's a lot like the city of Lafayette in demographics, in size, the university and you may not believe this, but the University of Nebraska only has 5,000 more students than ULL does. Very, very similar. The one thing that they do differently is they will not develop out to an area until the infrastructure's there. So you will not build in that area until the infrastructure there. We're doing it completely backwards. Now, I'm not saying we should do it any other way. But we had, the reason they do that is because they want to make sure that the person who's responsible for the infrastructure has built it. And that means everybody along the route. It shouldn't be left up to one individual or one developer unless he's developing the whole line. So we have, we have that situation to deal with. So we started looking within the NPO at that time of what actual impact costs were to continue building out. And impact fees would be about $30,000 an acre 15 years ago. Now, I don't think anybody wants to tack that on to the price of the property that they buy. So what we need to look at is how, how do we use the infrastructure we have already? And how do we make best use of our utility dollars and our taxes and our roads? And nobody's yet to break out yet. I'm waiting for some developer to break out. But we got to go up. We have to go up. And that's going to be a whole new structure of assessment, property assessment when we do. And, you know, I think, I'm glad Justin's here, I think one of the things we're going to have to look at is how do we consolidate our infrastructure for education? Because what, what first few questions people ask when they move into a Because what first few questions people ask when they move into a new neighborhood is they wanna know, what kind of school do I have? Do I have sidewalks? Do I have places for my kids to play? And at least the demographic I'm talking about is not only his demographic, but the people we are trying to get to stay in, in our city. We're trying to attract them back. And they're starting to come back. But they won't come back if we don't have anything to offer them. And if the only thing we can offer them is unsafe streets because they're too big with traffic that's out of control, without pedestrian walkways, without the opportunities to move around with their kids, then they're gonna go someplace else because those places exist. And they're looking for where they live first. They're looking for a sense of place first. Unlike my generation, they look for a job first and then move to the job. The millennium kids are, you know, they'll move to a community they wanna live in. They'll worry about the job second. And we're seeing more and more of that. And all you have to do is take a look at what technology has done in our community and who is drawing into our community. And guess where they wanna be? They wanna be downtown. And there's no place for them to live downtown. Very little place for them to live downtown. So we're looking at all of these things. Now, that's not to say they're not buying into the housing market. They are. But they're looking closer in and they're looking for opportunity. So at some point, developers are gonna have to think up because they're running out of ground. And we can't keep building infrastructure out all the way to Youngsville, all the way to the parish border to the east and the west. You know, it's just physically impossible and it's financially impossible as a city at the current tax rate and mileage rate, not sales tax and mileage rate. Those things will come to bias. Did I answer your question?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Good. That was a long-winded answer, but...
Glad you heard my... Well, I've got a list of things to talk about. First and foremost, our governor has brought a CFI downtown Lafayette. Says it can bring us three hundred and fifty jobs. CFI is the Canadian outfit that receives hundreds of billions of tax dollars to put Obamacare together, that big failure. And we now have them here in Lafayette downtown on Jefferson Street. Okay, moving back to this evening, your MPO, first time I've ever heard of this organization. They're not in the press? They don't issue any reports? Are they really that functioning? Okay, this Johnson Street Boulevard, that's been seen more or less as a Joy Durrell legacy. And it was knocked down some years ago because there was just no funding for it. Sure, we'd like to have a prettier city, but all we've got is Johnson Street and Congress. We don't have anything the other side of the bayou there, so to speak, funnel traffic. Why hasn't this been handled?
Would you ask that question again? Because I'm not sure I'm...
Okay, we've got Johnson Street and we've got Congress to bring traffic out of the northern part of the city to the south. Two streets. Why don't we have boulevards in other places? Used to be a mention made, they were gonna extend South College to the old Penrod Building, take it across the bayou and bring it out on Calais Salum. That was never done. Don't know who shut that down, but that was bad. The Lord's Hospital pasture, which is what it is now, rumors going around there's gonna be a new town hall or a courthouse built there. How can we do that when we still have hundreds of first responders we need? We need policemen, we need firemen. J.D. ambulance is keeping up with their personnel, but we haven't kept up with our police or our firemen. So why wouldn't we need a new townhouse or courthouse where the old Lord's used to stand? I mean, it's prime property. We oughta be able to make some taxes off of it. Streets here, oh my goodness. People here know about the streets. They're rough, they're ragged. We have about seventy, eighty thousand cars a day going down Johnson Street. The whole street needs replaced, substructure and everything. So I'm gonna have them. The airport, we have a, we went to vote to get taxes for our new airport expansion, a new building. The federal funding has not been locked down yet. Even if we got the thirty-six million dollar in taxes, the other sixty million they talked about federal funding, that's not been locked down. It's not promised to us. That's still up in the air. But all of a sudden, we have thirty-six million dollars to do something with in the city and it wouldn't mean to build a new airport. We're gonna watch that real close. The Avenging Thruway is vastly overloaded. Traffic is terrible. We've been talking for years, they wanted to bring a road in from out the other side of the swamp heading out toward Henderson. And another side, they wanted to bring it in from Scott. Okay, we now have the new four-lane bypass. It runs out of Ambassador Caffrey, goes out and connects Avenging Thruway. Why don't we go connect that thing up to Interstate, the other side of Interstate Ken, the other side of Scott? Run that traffic around the city instead of through the city. We just don't need that. Okay, you've been polite. Let me tell you some things on my mind.
Can I look at your books while I'm answering all your questions? Make records. Okay, let me preface my answers by saying this about roads. Understand something about the roads in the city of Lafayette. Those that aren't owned by the city, and we don't own as much as we should, are owned by the state and they're owned by the federal government. So that's where the money comes from for that, including Johnson Street. Most of the roads in Lafayette Parish were built by Huey Long. Now, that's not necessarily a bad thing. The one thing I'm gonna give him a lot of credit for, he pushed and got it done. He got farm-to-market roads in this area when we didn't have them. However, they're the same roads today as they were in his day. And eighty percent of the roads, when I went into office, eighty percent of the roads in this parish were owned by the state. What does the state have? Money? No. They have a moratorium on new roads. So the reason Ambassador Caffrey South to Highway ninety got built was because the city of Lafayette took over E. Ras Landry Road, uh, E. Ras Landry, Calais Salum Road from Ambassador to East Broussard. And we're gonna be making those improvements. So all is not what it seems when it comes to talking roads. Now, to answer part of your question, what I'm gonna tell you is you have to go back in history. The reason we don't have a loop around the city of Lafayette is because the folks across the river at Pinhook in the late nineteen fifty's did not want to join into the city of Lafayette because they didn't wanna have to pay city taxes. Well, the I-49 system was, or the interstate system was coming through Louisiana at the time. And the federal government was going by the census. And if Lafayette would've had sixty thousand residents at the time, they'd have built this a loop, just like the one in Baton Rouge. Where we were trying to, the city was trying to annex those people on the other side of the river. They got Gulf State Utilities to file a lawsuit against the city to be annexed. And they ultimately lost that suit, but it was after the nineteen sixty census. So that's why we don't have a loop. It's also why we don't have a lot of the frontage roads. Because people in Lafayette didn't want frontage roads at the time the interstate went through because they were afraid they were gonna lose all their retail customers to the interstate. So you can't make decisions based on fear, is what I'm telling you. You have to get as much information as you can. You have to have some vision for the future. And it doesn't mean that everybody, and look, not everybody has vision for the future. Some people will tell you, you know, I can't think past next week. But what we have done in Lafayette is we have not planned for our future. What we have now is a situation where we're having to pay for it. And let me give you a great example of that. The streets you talk about, Johnson Street, Ambassador Caffrey, Calais Salum Road, Pinhook, all on the south side, all of those are major thoroughfares. That's understood. Where is a minor arterial anywhere near those streets? They don't exist. You know what they are? They're neighborhood streets. Because the developers were asked to build the roads going back to probably the forties. If you ask a developer to build a road for his subdivision, what is he gonna build? Only what he has to. Our local government did not feel, because they didn't wanna go for you, go to you or to the people at that time, and ask them for a tax to build roads. So they just didn't. They put it all up to the developer. Johnson Street, all those subdivisions along Johnson Street, they all dump onto Johnson Street. There's no collector anywhere in there. Now, if you go look on the north side of Lafayette, what you're seeing now is the understanding as they start to develop there, that connectors and minor arterials are important. We have the opportunity today to do something different there than we had here. So what are we left with? We're left with connectivity, connecting neighborhoods. So when somebody builds a neighborhood, we connect the two together so that everybody's got office. Now, that's not necessarily new in Lafayette because when I was a kid, I lived on the corner of Adrian and Agnes. And to get to the mall, I went through Rivers Bend to Roble Drive and to the mall. I didn't get on Johnson Street. I avoided Johnson Street. And that was a long time ago and people still do the same thing. As far as CCI, excuse me, CFI?
No, MPO.
I'm sorry, what?
MPO, wasn't it?
I'm gonna get to that. I'm gonna get to that. I'm happy to bring any company here if they've got high-tech jobs. I don't particularly care about Obamacare, okay? Or care for it. But whether they're Canadian, French, Italian, I don't care. Believe it or not, jobs in our community are jobs in our community. Whether the company, what I want is a sound company. And, you know, what Gendel does in Baton Rouge, I'll be honest with you, he's great at handing out checks. And I've watched this all through my political career. But if they wanna bring a business to my community, whether they're Canadian...
Stop the fact they're Canadian, it's that they didn't do Obamacare right. It cost us hundreds of millions.
Well, let me put it to you this way. The city of Lafayette has no contract with them. So if they're doing work, if they're doing work, then, and I'll be honest with you, I don't know that much about CFI. I don't know about that much about what they do. But they are gonna be here, they're gonna have a business here, and they'll probably be employing some of our locals, which, right now, probably be a good thing. Let's talk about the MPO. Because that's something that I do have a great deal of information about. When federal funds come to our community, they come by way of the state legislature and MPOs are mandated by the federal government. And they, the MPO area of designation changes every ten years with the census. So we don't even get to decide what that MPO area is. But what we do do is we look for federal funding to get some of our tax dollars back that we send to Washington. And we look for state funding to get some of the dollars we send back to Baton Rouge. And we are a donor parish. We put back, well, let's see, the last numbers I heard were probably about ten years ago, so that number's probably grown. But we were sending eight million dollars, twenty-four million dollars a year in fuel taxes and getting about eight million dollars back. And that's on a five-year planning. So eight million dollars over five years doesn't buy us much. Avenging Thruway, state highway. That is coming with the I-49. The I-49 issue is resolved. I mean, it was resolved before I ran for office. I-49 will be coming through that corridor. And I won't be battling that issue for a loop either through Scott or through St. Martinville or anywhere else. I-49 is coming down through the same corridor as Highway ninety and I-10. Nothing I can do can change that. That's what's gonna happen. And it's gonna happen because all the homework was done long before I came into office. Now, do I agree with that? There's part of me that says I'd really like to have a loop outside the city, but I really don't know where we'd bring them. We looked at an opportunity probably fifteen years ago of connecting Gloria Switch Road all the way down to, in fact, getting it almost down to Maurice. Thirty million dollar project for the first two lanes, connecting all those roads. Then the opportunity was to start buying right away, or at least from an MPO member's thinking, was that we should then start buying the adjacent right away over a period of time. We were shut down by the state that said, we want you to think bigger. Well, thinking bigger has gotten us nothing. So is there a place for the MPO? Yes, absolutely. I invite you to any of our MPO meetings, in particular, our Transportation Policy Committee meetings. Because that's when you really get to see all of the folks within the MPO service area. And when I say service area, I'm not just talking about Lafayette Parish. We extend into St. Martin Parish, into St. Landry Parish, down into Iberia and Vermillion Parish. Because those are federal funds. And the federal government wants you to plan in the future of how you're gonna get around as a region, not just as one city. So as an MPO, we not only make decisions that affect the city of Lafayette, but we try and make decisions with everybody in the region concerned because we understand that growth is inevitable and that the challenges that we face, we have to face as a region. Because that's good planning. Let's see, the airport. I don't have any information on the federal funding portion of it yet, but, I mean, it just got passed. So I'll check into that and I'll get back to you on it. I know that there's probably some people in the room that didn't think that was a good idea. I have, you know, it's funny. You know, list of priorities. I have my list of priorities and every other council member has his list of priorities, the administration has their priorities. And every now and again, something comes up that is an opportunity. And I thought the airport was a great opportunity. I thought those residents that got out, there were fifty-seven thousand people who decided to show up and vote. And so overwhelming victory, sixty-five, thirty-five. I think they realized that we don't have an adequate airport. We haven't had an adequate airport since nine eleven. And that changed the world. And we're woefully behind in times. If you travel even a little bit, you know what I'm talking about. As far as security goes, there's no security in our airport. You drop your bag off in the front room. There is, that airport was designed for another time. It's a dinosaur. What this is gonna provide is an opportunity to build a new one, leave that one open until the new one is built. The day you cut the ribbon on the new one, I'm sorry. The day they cut the ribbon on the new one, they'll start tearing down the old one and doing the other improvements that they need to do too. We're woefully behind in parking at the airport. I don't know if you've noticed. But those parking lots stay... those parking lots stay full. So parking is going to be addressed in that expansion as well. Let's see, you had a long list, I'm trying to, let's see. Oh, I know, UL. Let me tell you something about rumors of things happening. I hear rumors all the time. Very few of them turn into reality. I have heard no rumor of that being the courthouse, and I have been involved in conversations about what to do with the courthouse and what to do downtown. That property has never come up in conversation. Well, I hear rumors too, but what I'm saying is, I don't believe rumors. And that's one rumor I haven't heard, and I've been in conversation with people about what to do about the courthouse. And unless somebody's got eighty million dollars hanging around, it ain't gonna happen. You can talk about it all you want to. Now, do I think that that would be a good location? Absolutely not. For a courthouse. And I guarantee you that if anybody has their sights set on that piece of property, it's University of Louisiana in Lafayette. And it makes sense because they're expanding and they need someplace to go. Let's see, what have I left out?
Police and fire.
And what about police and fire?
We don't have enough of them. We're expanding, and we are hundreds of people short.
Well, let me tell you about police and fire. We will never have enough. It's just like roads, we're not gonna build ourselves out of need when it comes to transportation while we're growing. Unless we're willing to pay for it. Because right now, you know, when, you know, you were talking about Joey Durrell while you were here, Joey went into office, and the reason I know these numbers is because I've looked at them, not just because he's quoted them. But it cost eight cents for us in the fire and police retirement system. It's now thirty cents on the dollar. We want more fire and policemen. But the current budget we have will not support that. We'll fill as many positions as we can. It will probably be what it always has been, and that's a revolving door. The recent report that we got, and that's probably what you're referring to in the council meeting, in the briefing last, was it last week or week before, about our needs, and they're, they're saying that we need fifteen firehouses in the, in the parish. He also stated that, well, we, we don't really need fifteen firehouses, we need fifteen locations to cover all of the area. And I understand that, but at a cost of, in the city, at a cost of two or three million dollars to build a firehouse, an adequate firehouse, the equipment and the manpower, you know, it's, it's an expensive proposition. And every year, the state mandates that we pay the firemen two percent more than they got the year before. It's not a question about whether they should or they shouldn't, it is mandated. What we get from Baton Rouge is mandates, but they're never funded mandates, they're always unfunded mandates. So we have to react to them. That's why our representation in Baton Rouge is so important. Because we can't just sit back and continually pay for the things that the state's not willing to pay for. Now, how do we resolve that? I don't know. I'm, I'm not a state representative, I don't, I don't walk the halls of, of the Capitol every week. But I know that we have to take a look at how we do things, not only in the state, but in, in our city, as we meet, start to meet these challenges, because they all cost money. I mean, look, Justin, what you're dealing with now. You know, it's money. What's the problem? It's money. You either have to consolidate in order to conserve your finance, finances, for infrastructure in particular, and, and, you know, in the way of schools, brick and mortar. I don't know how you deal with the burgeoning need. And, you know, I said a few years ago, when they, when they were going around doing the study and interviewing people about what they thought about the schools, and I said, well, I think our schools say what we think about our children. I think it's appalling, I think Lafayette High is appalling. I'm sure you probably agree. A school built in the sixties for a population in the sixties. And what do we do about it? We sit and say, isn't that appalling? Listen, nobody wants to pay more property taxes, nobody wants to pay more sales taxes. And everybody thinks there's a way to cut government, our local government, to where we can pay for all these things. I'm here to tell you, there isn't. We're a pretty lean, mean fighting machine. Now, they may do, we, we may do some things sometimes as a government that you don't like, but I have, I have to work with eight other guys in administration. I don't always like what they think their priorities are. But that's government. That is the system we have. And it will be like that long after I'm gone. It's called democracy. And, you know, our, our founding fathers wrote the Constitution, and they sat and they fought day in and day out to write the Constitution. Fortunately, we're not fighting right now in the council because I don't need another injured eye, but it still remains that the way our republic works is that we all have to work together. And when I go to a meeting on Tuesday night on any issue, I need five votes to get anything passed. And in some cases, I need six to override a veto. Or I need six to put something on the ballot. But that's the world I live in, that's the world you live in, and despite all that, we still have people who want to come here and live and open new businesses, and we're attracting them, and why? We attract them because of who we are. They wanna know our culture. They wanna know all about our culture, our music, our way of life. They want a piece of our technology. They see that we're looking ahead to the future. And those who are trending for the future wanna go to a place that's looking to the future. And they don't necessarily wanna go to San Francisco or Austin or some other big city. They get here and they fall in love with this place. And it's because of who we are. We understand that a sense of place means something. Anyway, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you, and it's good to see you all again, and we'll see you again in the future. But the meeting stands adjourned, and we appreciate everyone being with us.